And just bear with me, guys. I don't have my normal setup, so I'm gonna be a little. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. This is the Tuesday, January 26, 2021. This is a workshop meeting of this, oh, Scarborough Town Council. And I apologize, let me get John Anderson in here. I apologize for that. For some reason, I thought we had everybody. And he's not here yet, so I will continue. This is a presentation and discussion on the proposed affordable senior housing project by Avesta. And before I have Tom give the introduction, I just wanna, if you guys don't mind, because I started about 30 seconds early, I'm gonna pause and give Mr. Anderson time to show up, and then Tom, in about 30 seconds, I'll let you give the intro.
Please.
Can you guys hear my family yelling in the background, or are they far away enough that you can't hear it? No? Okay, good.
You want them to be yelling?
You know me, I don't really care all that much, but.
Are they excited about affordable housing?
No, they're just making dinner, actually. I'm just right next to the kitchen, so. All right, I'll let John in as soon as he gets here. So, Tom, do you want to give us some background information, and then I will hand it over to Mr. Soli and his team, I believe?
Sure, please do. Yeah, really, in the, in the spirit of what I think this council likes to see, which is to get involved on the ground floor, we've arranged this workshop for you to hear from Avesta Housing, but also Jack Soli, who's the owner developer of the former Public Safety Building, about a project, I believe, and Nate and Dana will go into more detail, but it's essentially a 31-unit senior affordable housing. I think these are all one bedrooms. Do recall that these programs require subsidy administered through main housing. And it seems quite clear, main housing is favoring senior housing for the last couple of funding cycles, and this, this upcoming one is no different. I think the funding cycle they're shooting for would be sometime late August, early September. So the good news is we've got some lead time, and I'm pleased that you're able to take some time tonight to at least hear this project. For our guests here, I think you have the benefit of a council that's fairly well schooled, if you will, in affordable housing enough to be dangerous anyhow, having gone through one earlier this year. So I think you'll find them quite inquisitive in asking some fairly probing questions. So with that, I want to make sure we leave time for you to describe your projects and for the council to really have some time to have some questions and discussion around the topic. So I'm not sure if Jack's gonna kick it off, or Nate or Dana?
Yeah, so thank you, Tom. So first of all, thank you, council, and thank you, Tom, for having this special meeting to review this project. We, we have, there's been many different iterations of what we've been trying to do, but we're still sticking with our original mission. So when we began this process, we talked to Tom about, the town manager, about creating a vibrant campus, which included housing and as many amenities as possible on the site. You're all familiar with the site, it's the former fire police station. So the goal from the start was to renovate the existing buildings on site, the fire and police station, and to add structures that contributed to a village atmosphere. And that's really been, from day one, we wanted to create a a feel on the site that folks felt comfortable walking, once they entered the site, that they felt they had landed onto a place, and then they felt comfortable walking the site. So that would support the broader community, that was the idea. So that safe environment, we're calling it, was and is intended to be ringed by green space with internal pathways and for visitors and residents. So in other words, a walking campus, that's been the goal from the start. We've also prioritized solar power and a mix of tenants that you'd want to neighbor your own houses, that we would all want to neighbor our houses. So none of that has changed. What has changed, and this is, I'm gonna say exclusively due to COVID, is this process has become probably the most challenging process in my 30 years involvement in real estate, because we have had a series of tenants that have come to the table that we have worked with to excruciating detail, only to have some aspect of their business plan fall through because of COVID. So I'm gonna give you one example. We have been working for over six months now with a local small chain of grocery stores that emphasizes local produce and fresh baked goods. This grocery store, they have five stores in the, in the immediate area, and they have had to close a store because of a positive test, reopen the store, close another store, reopen that store. It's been a series of sort of musical chairs of trying to keep stores open. They're finally at the point, after six months of negotiating with us and talking to us and coming to the table and going back to their business, that they finally feel comfortable enough that they feel like they can possibly move forward. I've never been involved in a lease negotiation, which has dragged on for six months without a tenant honestly being able to truly commit. So that's just one example. The reality is that we have not wanted to compromise what the vision was for the site. So there have been other prospective tenants that have come to the site, and frankly, they just didn't really fill, fit the program that we were looking for. They didn't fit that community sense, that walking campus, that green space with the solar power and the other amenities. And so in all honesty, we have turned away some tenants, but we feel that those just wouldn't fit in, again, with that community feel we're looking for. So, so overall, I, I think I can honestly say at this point that we are proud of where we have gotten to. It's taken much longer than we expected. And there has been some changes that we didn't expect, but we have put together a site plan that we're happy with, that, again, that we can take pride in, that is, differs very little from our original concept. There are some elements of it, and that's what we're gonna talk to you about, that are, that are, that are expressly different. And thank you, Nate, for bringing up the site plan. So I'm gonna give you a little tour of what we're proposing, and just sort of walk you through the site. So let's first look at the, the old police station at the lower right part of the site. So that police station is, as you can imagine, a difficult structure to repurpose. It's a cinder block building with very small spaces, low ceilings and quite a bit of it. And it's just a challenge all around to use, to reuse, but we didn't want to tear down a building and then recreate another building. So from the start, we thought that that would lend itself well to, again, an amenity on the campus. We've been targeting gyms. We finally have a gym that has a lease in front of them. We expect to sign the lease. Hopefully, by the end of this week, we expect to be able to countersign that lease by next week, and to have a 4,000 to 5,000 square foot gym on site. It's actually a CrossFit gym, it's an existing gym, they're currently located in South Portland. And they would, the owner actually lives in Scarborough, right around the corner, so they would simply move their clientele to this site. Extremely exciting for us. We haven't found an office user for the upstairs, that's what we'd like to find. On the left-hand part of the police station, we're hoping to create a community room that would be accessible to everyone in the community, but its primary use is to service what will be the housing component, which I'll get to as we work our way around the site. To the left, the police station, the fire station, which is really a critical component of this entire site. So this is where we've been trying to put the grocer. We, when the original grocer that we've been targeted, he's a longtime friend of, of ours. When he said, "I simply can't move forward during COVID," we've talked to several other grocers, we've gone back and forth. We're finally back to the original grocer, which I, hopefully, if we're able to land them, I think everyone in the community will be excited about. And potentially, a fish market as well, that would come with the grocer. So that space, again, as a community amenity, we feel really positive about what it can offer. Just above, we've been working with banks, and if you move, Nate, if you can just, the cursor a little bit above, yeah, so that space there, we're working with, we're now on our, I think, third or fourth bank that we've talked to, but we believe it's important to have a bank on site. Again, for the housing component, to be able to have banking, grossing, grocers, and a gym, it's just a great mix for the site. We finally have a bank that has not only expressed interest, that we have gotten to the place that we're expecting to get to a lease stage, hopefully, in the next couple few weeks. Because of COVID, they've had lots of issues, but it's a great, very strong bank that I think, again, everyone would feel excited about, and they don't currently have a presence in Scarborough. And then that brings us to the housing component. So, and we're, I'm gonna have Dana and Nate from Avesta Housing talk specifically about that, but I'm gonna just talk about what our original vision was, which was a, a small building that housed 25 units plus that were single occupancy, small condos, like a project we recently did, and would have a limited amount of impact to traffic on Route 1, and then would have a limited impact on the neighborhood. And what we have, what we've gone to is what we feel even stronger about, which is a senior housing community. Again, small units, so the format hasn't changed. The exterior, the aesthetics of the building are gonna be very similar to what we originally thought. Really, what has changed now is that it's a rental and it's senior housing, and as we'll discuss, it will require a TIF. But as far as the original concept, as we conceived it, it is, all of these programmatic elements are exactly as we intended. As you can see, the entire campus, we hope to ring it with, with, with trees, with green space. And as you can see in the interior, we hope to have sort of pathways or walking, you know, interior sidewalks or walking sidewalks, so that, again, the tenants can access all parts of the building, and then once you enter the site as a visitor, again, there's a feeling of security, of safety, that you feel that even though Route 1 is obviously a very busy corridor, that you feel comfortable being on that site, and especially for seniors, that you would be able to move around without feeling that you're somehow, you know, that you have to look both ways at all, at all times. So we're working closely with Jay, with the town planner, to, again, to get some comments, hopefully, shortly from Jay about that, but, but, but to create an interior site, that's inviting, of course. Currently, there's an extremely large curb cut onto Route 1, which we feel is, it's inappropriate, it's dangerous. I think it was even dangerous while the fire trucks were entering and exiting, so we intend to close that to a very manageable curb cut for traffic to enter. And then, as you can see, we're also gonna have just a single curb cut on the northern part of the site, and then a couple on the southern part of the site. So that's the big picture concept, and I just want to emphasize that really, programmatically, nothing has changed. What has changed is the timeframe, is the pain that we've gone through in order to try to get to the way we originally envisioned the site. It, no part of it has been easy during COVID, and, and I, I know even the purchase of the site dragged on for much longer than we intended, simply because we weren't able to assure anybody that we were gonna be able to get tenants during COVID. That's beginning to change now. We're feeling a lot more comfortable with the direction we're heading, certainly having the gym finally getting to the lease stage, having the grocer getting very close to the lease, having a bank very close to that as well. We're much more optimistic, and certainly having Avesta Housing on site is, I think, a great boon to the community to have, you know, low impact in terms of traffic, small units, and, and senior housing. So so before I turn it over to Dana to talk specifically, and Nate to talk specifically about the senior housing component, does anybody have any questions about the site itself? I mean, it's, you're obviously been given a lot of information in a very short time, but yes.
I, Jack, I do. It's G Mary. What happened to Betty's Park?
So, good question, thank you, G Mary. So, you know, so the park on the, on the Route 1 side of the site, so we're intending to actually shift that just slightly over, did you see there's a green space between the grocery? Exactly, we're gonna move that, the granite columns, the pieces, the memorial there, to that site, and so that's the intention, is to create a sort of a mini interior park right there with some seating as well.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I'm liaison to the Historic Preservation Committee, and they wanted me to ask that, because they were concerned about what they've heard and seen and, and whatnot, so.
No, absolutely not. Thank you so much for asking that question. That, absolutely, we're going to keep that as part of the site, that's the intention.
And G Mary, I'll just add, I've reached out to former counselor, the council chair, Carol Rancourt, who was, who knew the family, knows the family, and I'm trying to be in touch with her grandchildren, just to, to bring them into the conversation, make sure they're aware. So it's timely that there are some things to report, so.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
Yeah, Betsy?
What are the annual property taxes, the way the property is right now?
Well, since it was a municipal property, it actually has, I don't believe it's been assessed yet for the annual property taxes. But I think, Tom, could you speak a little bit more to that, because we, usually, it's not till April, correct?
Correct. It will have a value as now a private, non-exempt property as of this coming April, so I don't have an answer to you. I can see if the assessor's been working on that number, but that will be the first time it's had a taxable value in at least modern history.
Right. Some, sometimes municipalities will put a value and then, you know, just zero it out, but, so we don't, we don't have one.
You're right, many times there is a value. I, I don't know that off the top of my head, I can certainly provide that to you.
It, it was around 1.9 million was what the city had assumed the value was initially, so, but again, we don't know what that's gonna be, and, you know, obviously, many things have changed, many factors have changed.
So you have more to your presentation, so I don't want to ask too many questions at this point, but is this a fairly good representation of how many parking spaces you think you would put in? Because I believe with the other plan, you talked about perhaps needing some parking over on the Fairfield, across the Fairfield side, on the Amato's, or some other place in town, if you had a restaurant or something like that.
Right, no, thank you. Another good question. So these, the parking spaces that you see on site represent what would be required for zoning. We think there's actually more parking than is necessary, because the senior housing complex is, as, as Dana and Nate will talk about, use much less parking than if we had simply had a condo project there. So the public parking on the space adjacent to Amato's, yeah, that, that is, you know, it's almost sort of like bonus parking, and it's great to have that. But we don't envision that being a necessary component, but we'd like to maintain that as, as municipal parking.
So I guess I'll ask one more question, because there seems to be a huge demand for, you know, originally, this was kind of that new buzzword, workforce housing, you were gonna build, you know, sort of, you didn't have to, you know, it doesn't have really super strict, I guess it does, definition that's kind of been made up by some municipalities now, but kind of, I don't want to use the word affordable, but, you know, you were, you were shooting to have, you know, workforce-type folks be able to purchase these units. And there seems to be a huge demand for that still, so is there a reason why you don't want to go forward with what you had originally proposed on the housing portion?
Yeah, so thank you for asking that. And so it's, as many developers, real estate investors, people have done, so obviously, we've pivoted to a partnership with Avesta that we feel is probably better suited for this site. I, I do believe, and I, it's, it's a, it's part of my makeup, is to build workforce housing, that's something I personally fervently believe in, and I will pursue, be pursuing other sites in Scarborough. This particular site, the more we looked at it, because just where it's positioned, because of the amenities and the immediate vicinity, we just felt that senior housing was much better suited for this site, and it's an interior site where seniors could actually, if we're, again, able to close on the gym and the grocer, it just made sense that this was, and also the less impact on traffic. For all of those reasons, when we talked to planning staff, and when we thought it through ourselves, it just lent itself much better to a senior housing site. Absolutely, though, I, I intend and hope to find another site for a, for workforce housing.
Right. Yeah, definitely more of an advantage for us as a town, for sure. But the, in terms of the, you know, revenue, just speaking revenue, I'm not sure a lot of seniors will be doing CrossFit, but just been, one of my kind of complaints about CrossFit, can't do it if you're old. So, yeah, I, I don't know, we'll, I guess we'll get to that part of the presentation, but, yeah, it was, it was very interesting, the other way, the, and some of the other workforce developments you had done, it just seems to be there's still a huge demand for that, so.
And, and, and thank you, you know, that, I, I believe there is, that there's also, I, I have to say that construction costs have been crazy in the last 12 months, and so though the projects, the last projects we've done, they were successful, and that we're able to sell through, and obviously, there have very limited profitability, I'll be honest about that. The margins are really tight. With, with COVID and construction cost, it certainly was a factor, and that we feel like, you know, we have to get back to sort of normalize material costs and labor cost, and before, you know, not necessarily before we do another project, but it, it really is a contributing factor in our decision-making process.
Right. That's honest, but it was a great opportunity. What I liked is like, you know, you weren't putting anything in the D to restrict, you know, what people could sell it for, so allow a lot of people to get in the market and build value, particularly maybe targeted towards younger, younger people, so that, that part of it was, you know, quite, quite enticing, I think, yeah.
And, and trust me, I, I, if, you know, and I am desperately looking for other opportunities for that, and, and we will find them, we'll find them in Scarborough, I know we will, it's, it's just, it's timing, it's finding the right site, so you have to look at it, there's so many different factors to look at, so. I also just want to mention back with parking, that Scarborough does have a shared parking arrangement, and so that we will, you know, so spaces, for instance, spaces that are not used, you know, at night, can be used by tenants, by, by the residents, and, and other spaces that are available, you know, might be used at different times, so it's, it's, um, so we've worked closely with planning to make sure that with the shared parking arrangement, that this really, the parking will make sense, that we're not gonna be overrunning the neighborhood, there's not gonna be sort of spill over into the surrounding streets, that's really important. It's what we heard from the neighborhood, so we're, we're trying to keep to some, a plan that makes sense for everybody.
Ken, Ken Johnson, I think you had your hand up, do you still have a question?
Yeah, you know, I had a question, this, this is probably gonna come further in the discussion, but I, I'm trying to level set my memory in, in the vote that we took to change the zoning to allow the sale on the public safety. And at that time, I don't recall any, you call it a TIF, I call it a CEA, in play on the purchase of this building. Now, once you purchase the building, of course, you own it, you could do anything you want, but was a CEA actually discussed before the purchase of, of this building, or is this something that happened after because of market forces?
Yeah, again, it's, it's, it's been a process, so we didn't, at the initial purchase, at that point, we didn't expect to be pivoting, like many people have done. It's, it's again, a combination of market forces, a combination of the success that, or, or the, the challenges that we've had on site, so a combination of a lot of different factors. We first brought it up, it's been many months now that we first brought it up with the town manager, but, but again, it was, even that has been a process, the partnership with Avesta, it's not, it's, it's trying to figure out how that would work, there's, it's a complex arrangement, and every aspect of this site has been complicated.
No, and I understand that, I, I'm just trying to get my head around whether a CEA, or as you call it, a TIF, was part of your expectation in purchasing of the property, because this is actually the first time I'm hearing of, of it after the purchase, so.
So no.
I understand my vote on the change on the, on, on the zoning. If CEA would have come up, that might have influenced my vote, so I'm, I'm trying to find the timeline of when CEA came up, because I, I do not recall that. I, I thought your business model actually built affordable without CEA, so is this a change, or was this an expectation from the start?
Yep, so, and, and so, again, I'll, I'll say that, first of all, the site were, as far as the CEA, the TIF, were exclusively looking at the residential building, so the rest of the site is not part of that, right? So the rest of the site will throw off revenue. And so there will be an assessment, and will contribute to the town's, you know, to the town's coffers as part of that, so it's exclusively that residential component. As far as when we originally brought it up, I know, Tom, you might have a recollection, when we first talked about the idea, it was many months ago, and, and we mentioned Avesta and the possibility, I don't, do you have an idea of when that was?
I don't remember necessarily, but certainly, prior to the sale, there was, I don't recall a discussion, but I, we have certainly talked subsequent to the sale, yes.
I think, I think I can, I, I, I think timeline-wise, I think it was probably first brought to Don and I, I would say about two months ago, I think, maybe a month and a half ago. So, yeah, I mean, my timeline, to Counselor Johnson's point, is, I think, quite specifically, we were, we were presented with material that suggested there was, there was going to be no request from the town. And then I believe that this request, I, I believe, you must have had an initial conversation with Tom, I'm gonna guess about two months ago, we heard it for the first time about a month and a half ago. But Counsel Johnson, I agree, it, I think when, and, and frankly, that's why we're having this workshop, I, I think, I think everybody knows that, I mean, the, the, to me, the sticking point was that our premises have changed, or they're attempting to be changed, and I think that's important for us to, to, to be able to have this conversation early.
I'm just trying to understand, I'm not.
Totally, yeah. Yeah. Um, and just to, I guess, to that point, sorry, Nate, by the way, sorry to kick you off, it's just easier for me to see everybody. To that point, do we want to continue with this thread of conversation? Do we want to see Nate's presentation about the affordability aspect? I, I mean, I'm willing to go either way. Do we want to flush out the rest of this, or do we want to have Nate capture the screen and finish the, because Nate, I think you're gonna actually show a little bit more of the physical apartments, is that correct?
I'm gonna be showing the, some examples of other developments, and yeah, then I'll go into, I can show the floor plan on the first floor.
So can we do this, Nate? Can I, can I give you only 10 minutes, just because we're already halfway through this, and I want to make sure people's concerns are addressed? So Counsel Clucci, then I'll hand it to Nate for a hard 10 minutes, and then we'll, we'll come back.
Okay. Yeah. I, I just want, there's a gap, I think, that hasn't been talked about, and that was when COVID came up, right? So we had the zoning discussions, and I think a lot of the discussions about selling the building, pre-COVID, or right on the, the early stages of COVID, and then there was a, I think, an extension given to the developer, we're unsure if he was gonna actually be able to close the deal because of the, the market changes, so. I, I have a vague recollection of, of, you know, maybe shortly after it closed, that pivot maybe becoming a reality, or something where the, the workforce housing component might have to be more of an affordable housing component. So I, I guess it's, it's a, it's been a bumpy road with, with COVID, so I agree, it's not exactly how it was pitched to us at the initial stages, I think the concept's very similar, but you know, I, I think the fact is, or to make it work right now, it requires some help from the town and the state, is what it seems like.
Jack, do you, so, we sold it too, I think, for somewhere around 1.4, and we're saying it's roughly 1.9 right now. Do you have any idea of how much added value you're gonna, you're gonna create, and then of that added value, how much is the residential that you're asking for a CEA, and then how much is everything else that you're not asking for a CEA?
Yeah, that's, you know, to actually do that, that spreadsheet, I don't have that. We bought it for 1,525, one and a half million, and so there will be, you know, I, I think Tom is his hand up, so maybe he has a better idea. And so there will be, you know, I I think Tom is his hands up, so maybe he has a better idea of what those numbers are. And then, okay, maybe not. But certainly, we can, you know, Nate and Dana can get into the exact amount of what the TIF would be, CEA would be. But it's, again, it's a site that, of course, the town had, you know, no revenue from, is municipal site. And so we're hoping to add a tremendous amount of value to the site. And and also, it's, I, to me, yes, and thank you. It COVID has required all of us to pivot. This has not been a linear path. I I will be the first to be on, you know, to confess to that. If we knew exactly what we were going to do from the start and we stayed with that, I think all of us would be happy, right? And and say like, this is what we conceived. This is, we got A, B, C, D, we went down this linear path and we got to where we needed to get to. It just hasn't happened. And and I, you know, again, I've been doing this for 30 years. This has been the most challenging site in 30 years I've ever worked on. I never saw that coming. And all of the market forces, everything we've had to been through, that we've been through to date, tenants coming to the plate and then going away, coming back, going away repeatedly. I've just never expected that to happen. I've never seen that happen before. So it's been, you know, a difficult process. I feel really good about where we are right now. I understand it's different from where we first talked about before we bought the property. It's been, you know, it's been a few months now that we talked about pivoting to to a senior complex, to a senior housing complex. But I think it also works on the site and I feel good about that.
So I don't, I'm sorry to, I'm going to stay with my question, so forgive me for one second. You must, I mean, you've negotiated some lease rates here, right? And we have a pretty good, we have a pretty good detailed plan of what the residential, right? So are we talking upwards of like $5 million of increased value in the total site plan? Or, I mean, you must have some idea if you're negotiating lease rates and we know some market values, right? I don't want to put words in your mouth, so I'm not holding you to this. I just.
You know, honestly, I'd feel much more comfortable if I could give you, I could do it and then send you something rather than just trying to pick something out of the sky. Because I just don't want to regret having, especially, you know, I want to be able to tell you something and feel good about it. That's all.
I I accept, I accept that answer, Jack. Thank you. Betsy, did you have a question?
I know, I'm sorry, Paul. I know we have to move on from this, but you did delay the closing. We gave you an extension. We had to vote on that. This, you know, before COVID, you know, it was very clear, this is a good deal for the town. And I think I talked to you directly and I, you know, I said, well, a lot of people don't want housing there. And you said, really, that's the only way to make this site pay, you know, even if you talk to other developers. It was kind of your opinion that you had to put the multi-units in there to to be profitable, you know, you know, to make, you got to make some money. You're a businessman. So you delayed the closing. Were you considering not closing on the property because of COVID? Or, you know, and so was it that point during the delayed closing that, you know, the the conversation kind of turned to, well, maybe, maybe this could be converted to a TIP CEA affordable housing and that kind of drove you to go ahead and close? Because I know we did have to give you more time, you know, to decide whether you were closing or not.
We didn't actually pivot until after we closed, to well after we closed. So we still expected to be able to do a housing project like we initially conceived there. The reason it dragged on again is because we thought we had tenants in hand and we thought we had a sure thing and they kept backing out. And it was.
Okay, right. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not an expert at all. So you kind of line up the tenants and then you.
Absolutely. So we had, I'm just going to give you a quick example. I know we're going to move on. We had LOIs, letter of intents, signed letter of intents from tenants. And all of them went away, 100% of them went away. And I've never been in that situation where we've had a handful of LOIs, like literally ready to go. And then they're gone the next day. I've never been there before. So and I've been through the 91 crash, I've been through the 08 crash, and this has never happened.
That's, okay, that's helpful. Great, thank you.
Jack, we appreciate your candor in answering these seriously.
Absolutely.
Nate, why don't you take it away and and take 10 minutes to explain the the residential aspect?
Absolutely. I'm actually going to transition it to Dan just to kick us off, give us some history on a couple other similar developments. So I'm going to share.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sorry. That's exactly what I was going to say. Yep.
So I'll jump in. I'm Dana Tockman, President and CEO of Avesta Housing. Thank you for, thank you, Councilors, for having us. I I'm going to provide sort of a quick summary of what we do in in senior housing. And then Nate is going to drill down and explain what we have planned on this site. Avesta Housing since 1972 has been creating senior affordable housing. Today, we have about 55 senior developments, housing about 1,500 individuals, seniors. And those are in 25 towns scattered around Maine and Southern New Hampshire. As as we speak here today, we have five new developments that are hopefully going to break ground in the coming year in Farmington, Freiburg, Gorham, Gray and Lewiston. And we have some others that are surely behind those. So I'm going to conclude this with sort of saying why we do it. But before I do that, I just want to kind of look at some examples here. And and we wanted to sort of share with you sort of a typical senior development, no two are exactly the same. The first one on the screen here is a a recent development we did in Hampton Falls, New Hampshire. The state of New Hampshire had some land and they wanted some housing developed on it. And we proposed developing three phases of 24 unit buildings. And so today, we just concluded the third building and there are 74 households living there. The second one is the Park Street School, which is a little similar to this in that we've sort of combined a municipal owned building with some new housing adjacent to some gardens and ball fields. And so that is 30 units of senior housing that we did in Kennebunk, oh, probably six, seven years ago, has today a waiting list of 180 people wanting to move in there. The third one that I'm going to mention, Nate, do we have a picture of?
Yep, sorry about that.
That's about three years ago, we did Bartlett Woods in the town of Yarmouth. There was a nonprofit there. They wanted to partner with us to see if we could help them do a second phase on this site. And so working with that nonprofit, we created 28 units of new senior housing there. Shortly after that, we went to Falmouth and did 19 units on a on existing, again, as existing development. I want to point out that all of these that I've mentioned so far are very much downtown, except for Hampton Falls, it doesn't really have a downtown. But Kennebunk, Yarmouth, Falmouth, these are all walking distance to things like the library or stores. And then the the fifth one, that's probably the closest to to you all is just over the Saco line. And that's Cascade Brook. That's 30 units that we did on a development that Elliot Chamberlain was developing down there on Route 1. And again, that's been a great success. So what I what I want to kind of leave you with before Nate jumps into why we're here is we currently are just finishing up on a 40 unit development here in Portland called Wessex Woods. It's out on out of Brighton Avenue, across from the Chevy dealership. And again, there's 40 senior households that will be moving in there. And we've had 1,100 people express interest in moving in, again, 1,100 people. In the perimeter around Scarborough, Gorham, Saco, South Portland, we have 10 developments, all with waiting lists anywhere from 50 to 200 people. So the demand for senior housing is simply through the roof and our phone just rings off the hook. Main housing indicates we need 10,000 more senior housing units in the state. Last year statewide, there was about 200, less than 200 created. So the the need is huge and that's why we keep doing it. Communities keep coming to us, wanting us to help the seniors that are that are aging in their community. In most cases, no longer is their single family home appropriate. And they get on our waitlist and they move in and in many cases, they conclude their lives, living in our senior housing. So I'll stop there and Nate can talk about this development in in more detail.
Just going to get a couple of pictures here. All right. So brief introduction, my name is Nate House. I'm a Development Officer with Avesta. Been there for about two years now, working on a few senior developments in the general Cumberland County area right now.
Sorry to interrupt, Nate. Can you make your, can you maximize your screen just so it's a little bit easier for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about that?
Yeah, it's a little, thank you. It's just, I was having a hard time.
Go one more.
I'm getting old. No, that's that's better. Thank you. All right. Sorry. Keep going. I'm sorry.
No worries. So I've got one project in Gorham and one project in Gray, similar sizes to what we're proposing here. So the demographics of this project would be the seniors 55 and older. So 55, maybe they're still able to do that CrossFit like Betsy was asking about, maybe not too old. Small units, as Jack pointed out, these are all less than 600 square feet. So quite in the micro unit level, but there are 31 bedrooms all around 575. And there's going to be one efficiency unit around 430 square feet. At our senior properties, we typically don't see one to one parking. Typical, the typical ratio we use and one we just used in town of Gorham was 0.7. So 0.7 spaces for every unit. So that is better for towns from a traffic perspective. In reality, I've kind of done my own rudimentary parking analysis myself while I was planning this next phase at our Gorham project and found that utilization percentage is somewhere around actually 50%. So again, as Jack was pointing out earlier, we don't, we expect, we're meeting the parking, the the parking requirements of the town, but we don't expect to actually need them all. And that overflow parking space from Amados, it doesn't sound like that will be necessary, but it's good to have. This site really appealed to us because of the activities and the proximities of to activities of daily living. Something that's very important for seniors is to stay active and be near, near grocery stores, pharmacies, bus stops, et cetera. So this site in a central location in itself, forming its own kind of encapsulated campus is exactly what we look for for our senior developments. So the question is, how do we develop affordable housing today? What's the process? Well, we pretty much have to go through main housing. And how do you get funded under main housing? You compete with other affordable housing developers. So scoring is something that we're acutely aware of when we look at sites and when we look at municipalities in which to develop. When we look at this site, Scarborough is a great site. It's a service center community. It's a high opportunity area. You guys have a bus stop. You guys have all of these amenities along Route 1. It's perfect. The scoring, though, is very competitive. The past year, the highest funded application scored, I think, like an 80 and the lowest funded application scored a 74. And there were only four applicants that actually received one of these very lucrative 9% awards. So we're requesting a TIF for three points essentially to get us into that 74, 73 threshold so that we are competitive. How we get there, in discussions with Tom, it seems that the easiest, maybe easiest way for the town, I don't want to speak for you, but the easiest way for the town to get there might be a 75% credit enhancement agreement using the TIF district that was created with the Downs redevelopments. And again, this all comes back to competing and it also helps from a financial feasibility standpoint. When you set the rents lower so that seniors can afford to age in place, you reduce the amount of money that you can borrow. And so that other money has to come from either equity or other soft debt. And in the absence of those, reducing taxes helps us borrow more money to take on more debt from main housing and build these units. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and open it up to questions.
I just want to be clear, I had one conversation, a follow up email with Nate. You know, what I did suggest is him being clear on the points that they're seeking and be flexible in terms of the terms. So we really haven't had any further discussions than that. I certainly appreciate and learn from the Jocelyn Place experience. And I think we have the the runway in front of us to involve committees or the full council, if you wish, to kind of work out those terms. But I just want to make sure you're clear what their expectation was.
Yes, I initially, I I initially asked Tom about a 50% for 30 years because that is those same three points. So we can be flexible on that point. It was just for us to be competitive.
And I think we did that exact exercise for Jocelyn Place. I think we compared those two scenarios because those were the the quote rock bottom three point scenarios.
Yeah, well, not not exactly, because, you know, it depends on what TIF, if we create a new TIF or not, an affordable housing TIF versus using and the economic development TIF again, which is for economic development.
No, I understand, I understand. The extra 3%. I I get that part. Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think we were able to get as low as 50% using that existing TIF, but we had run out of time. So it's good that we've got a long runway on this.
Counselor Katerina and then Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I'm I will be honest with you guys, I was disappointed to see that we're not going to do workforce housing, that we're doing yet another senior housing. I'm a senior myself, but I hate to see Scarborough lose diversity of housing. I think that's critical and I think it's really critical for younger folks because we're losing a lot of younger people, can't afford to be here. That being said, I've just been thinking creatively and just going to throw this out here because I can't remember the Misha rules and whatever. It's possible to do some multi-generational in this, to have it not just strictly elderly, but have a certain proportion of this building be other than elderly or are the Misha rules that it strictly has to be 55 and over? And the reason I ask that is because I'm I'm what's called a senior residential specialist in real estate. And I have a whole lot of seniors who would love to live in a place like this, but they don't want to live with a bunch of old people. And I, that's a quote. They don't necessarily want to live in a place where it's just older people. So I was just thinking a little creatively and trying to wonder if there's anything out there that allows for some multi-generational housing. So that was just my my thought question.
I'll, I'll take a stab at that, Counselor Katerina. I, the short answer is, it really is the main housing rules that we're living with. And in fact, they have some monies that have come from voters in some cases, it was a senior housing bond that oftentimes gets sprinkled into these. And so the the way they set their programs off and the way they use certain monies, oftentimes that may have age restrictions, they will basically say a development needs to be either 55 plus or not, not age restricted. And they happen to have more money and more opportunity for seniors fitting because Maine's the oldest state in the country. And that's probably the group that we have biggest need need in our waitlist. But I fully understand the intergenerational activity. We love it when our senior developments are next door to a school. So at least they're, you know, they may volunteer in the school or there may be some interaction. But I also understand the the idea of seniors not wanting to live with all seniors personally.
Counselor Johnson, then Hamill, then Gleystein.
Yeah, a couple of questions, one for Tom. Number one, I really appreciate this work zero to get us on on board on on what the request is. So a couple of questions, question to Tom. From what I've heard, this is also already in the planning board process, correct?
They, I believe, have their submission ready to go. In fact, I've encouraged them to hold that back so this, the council can have this submission discussion. So they're poised and ready.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because again, you know, everybody understands council has to approve a CEA. We do not want to utilize staff resources if if this is a no go right on the offset. So my second question is, we have 13 minutes left to this meeting. I have got 100 questions that need to be asked and answered before I either stand behind this or not. How do we do that? Do we go to a workshop 0.0 or 0.1?
Well, I'll answer that. I think that the way I envision wrapping up this meeting is to, for instance, I want to ask Jack directly to produce the increased captured value and what percent of that will be residential. So before we, so he's going to be tasked, that's my request of him, right? So I'm, and so I would utilize this opportunity to ask, I'm sure he will, is willing to produce anything that we want to see. So Jack, that's me formally asking you, right? So there's one. So if you have anything else, I think that's a good start and we'll see when that trickles in and we'll react. Don and I, timeline wise, will react accordingly. So, you know.
Just along with that, Paul, and I don't mean to jump in here, but I'm just going on that point. Nate, South Portland Housing Development Authority produced a similar thing for actually the unit. So I would think that Nate would have some tax tables for what value he thinks he's going to bring to the table, especially if he's asking for a 50%.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm. Yeah, I'm with Ken. I have a ton of questions, so I'll wait my turn if it happens, but yeah.
I know we don't have a lot of time, but I'll just throw out there that I think we're all going to have a lot of questions. And there's a lot of details that need to be ironed out before we could either get behind it or not. And I'll offer up that I think it's something that while it doesn't exactly fit with the TIF policy that we approved last year. I think there's enough semblance of structure there that we could start down that process. And that might help get us closer to, you know, being able to either lend our support or not behind it.
Well, in fact, I think Counselor Gleystein had mentioned that at, I believe, at our, at our goal setting workshop. And I had actually, I said, I think I had committed that out of this workshop, perhaps, perhaps we instruct Mr. Soli to go through our new TIF policy process and, and sorry, Jack, but you might be our guinea pig, right?
So it's CEA. I mean, it's not.
Right. That's what I meant. Yes. I am going to get to Mr. Hamill because everybody's talked all over him and he's been patiently raising his hand.
I've been working on this as a development goal of my own and I'm now, you know, I've been working on it for a long time. So thank you. I don't have, I have some questions. I'll hold those for when we have a chance to ask them in more detail. But I did want to share a couple of thoughts with you. I heard, you know, Jack say thoroughly and, you know, and we understand this, that life changed with, with COVID, right? So it, you know, it's changed for us as well. If you look back at our recent but robust CEA history, you know, it was the eighty million dollar CEA in twenty eighteen with the Downs and then Bessie two in twenty nineteen. Not all of these are, are senior or affordable. Then we had a, you know, then we had the WEX CEA for a commercial office building. So I mean, a lot of experience with CEAs and most recently Jocelyn Place. So we kind of know the drill. We know the senior housing drill. But the one thing I'd ask you to think about is that we know your profitability has changed and that with funding for senior housing, it's going to make your picture look a lot better. But our picture also involves things like demographics. A couple of people have talked about it. We've had so much of a burst of senior housing and related services to senior housing that, you know, you know, we could be the oldest town in Maine, along with being the oldest state in, in the nation in terms of average age. So we're concerned about the mix. I think Jean Marie touched on this a little bit in terms of the, why we were so excited about, you know, this potentially being a place for, for frontline people for, you know, for workforce housing, as you put it. So I just ask you to think about that as you go through the process. I don't know how much the funk, the, the design changes, but we understand the profitability changes. But it's a tougher environment for us as well economically in terms of like going to CEAs. It's just a fact. So I would leave you with that.
So so far, just to maybe give Jack some homework, do we, do we agree that, Betsy, I'll get to you in just one second, just one second. Do we agree that we want Jack to go through our CEA process? Is that, does every, so, okay, so that's a yes. And then Jack, I'm asking for, you know what I'm asking of you. I don't have to repeat myself. Dawn and Jean Marie have expressed that I think one of the attractiveness of this original transaction that we did was, you know, it's supposed to be part of the larger downtown area coupled with the Downs, right? So instead of a self-contained unit almost that you're speaking of, I think we were thinking more affordability for twenty year olds in Scarborough. Because frankly, there's not, right? We don't have affordability for twenty and thirty something year olds that aren't dual income households. So just keep that, obviously, that's the exact opposite of what you're asking for, but I think we're all expressing that that's half one of the attractiveness. That's why, you know, we were attracted to the project in the beginning. So I think I did a good job of summarizing some thoughts and some homework. Betsy, do you want to ask or?
Just from Avesta, I know you guys, you've been around since nineteen seventy two, but whatever you could provide on understanding, you know, the types of services that you do provide to this type of housing, you don't have to answer it tonight, but, you know, wellness checks, transportation, meals, staff that you have check in, how you maintain the buildings, how much is section eight? How much is other rent, you know, what do you call it, market rent rental, you know? So I'm sure you have all those details. If you don't, I'm not asking for you to put those together at this point since we're still such an early phase. But I figure you could probably provide some of that based on what you're doing and many of the other ones. So we were able to learn all that from, you know, what the management team was from South Portland. I actually got to go tour one of their buildings, which is, you know, pretty cool. They have, you know, with the way they do it. So anyway, yeah, so if anything that you could provide on, on the Avesta side would also be a huge help. Thanks.
And Betsy, you also, sorry, Dan, Betsy, just really quick, you also requested values, right, for the affordable.
Yeah, I think, you know, what you think that you're going to produce in value and then, you know, you know, anybody could run. We didn't run it very well with Jocelyn, I don't think, because our tax rate goes up. So if you had, you know, if you assume a three percent tax increase each year and, you know, you were asking for a fifty percent or seventy five percent, you know, what's that going to look like for the revenue, revenue picture over, over thirty years?
Sure.
So I just one quick point is that with finally getting to the lease stage with potentially a couple of tenancies, we were looking at the site sort of globally and doing, that's why we're doing sort of master development plan. Because obviously we're going to have to go for building permits and for instance, the gym needs to be in by this summer. And so I think we'll have to work with, if, if this, this part of the process might take a little longer. So we'll have to work with planning to figure out how that's going to work to go forward. And I'm not clear in my head how, I mean, I defer to Jay and planning. But, but we do need, there is a finally a timeframe that we have to adhere to, obviously, to start looking for building permits. And we have demo permits, but we need to start thinking about building out some of the spaces. So there is some immediacy and I'll, I'll figure out, I guess with Tom and Jay.
Jack, I'll work with you and Jay in that regard. Just for the council's benefit and perhaps our guests as well. The CEA policy, you will be the first one, so it should be interesting. It also was created for economic development tips. So I think there's going to be a bit of clunkiness. So I just put that out there. Just, we all need to appreciate it's the first time through and it wasn't specifically designed for a project like this. But I think there's a lot of good fundamentals that will, will help flush this thing out.
And we're all, we're all nodding our head, Jack. So we will give you some leeway.
I would add though, you know, this is kind of interesting because this is almost a mixed request. You know, part, partly that, you know, he's not asking for anything from us. He already owns a property. But, you know, there is a revenue generating portion of this and then, and then a lesser potential, you know, potential CEA. So even that makes it unusual in itself besides CEA policy. So, yeah. And just really quick, I mean, it's exciting that you're developing the other two existing buildings. I'm sure they're going to look better and that's very exciting. So that's really, that's great.
So what we'll do next, Jack, is obviously, you know, there'll be some sort of week, two week timeline on some turnover from you. And then council leadership will meet again and we'll hope to, you know, I'll get another temperature from where we are as a council. And, you know, you, I understand you're going to try to move forward with the other components, trying to work around the residential component, which makes sense. But I think you mentioned somewhere in August, so we have at least some, some sort of runway here. And I think this is a good positive way to start the process and we'll take it from there. So.
Well, I just want to thank you all. I mean, I understand, again, this is not the initial expectation and it's, it's a surprise for all of us, myself included. So I just wanted to say that and I really appreciate your comments and feedback.
All right, guys, I'm going to ask you, this is the same Zoom meeting that we're going to do the regular council in. So if you guys can just leave, that way I don't have to kick you out. If that's okay. Or, you know.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys. For the rest of us, I'm going to.
Very much, very, very interesting.
I'm going to, I'm going to turn my camera off and mic off for three minutes and take a quick break and then I'll, we'll convene in three minutes.
You intentionally unmute, sir?
I certainly am not. Monica Russo, if you can hear me, we're just going to take two or three minute short break and we'll be picking up the council meeting immediately thereafter.
Bless you.
Did you hear that?
Yeah. Was that Lucy?
That was Lucy. Yes. Counselor Johnson says bless you.
Paul, can you pull Tony in? And once we get up and running, Monica Russo is representative from Maine Health.
Yep.
That we should invite. I've not made arrangements for the fire chief to be here. I didn't think that was necessary. I can try to make that arrangement right now if you think we need him.
I don't, I guess I don't know the answer to that.
Well, if our chief simply coordinates the staff process for mass gathering, I think his memo was quite clear in, in that regard.
I, I don't think we need Mike for this. I've been, I've done other mass gathering things in my tenure here and we don't need him. Not that we don't love him.
I'm going to, actually, let me pull on Tony. Sorry. And then I will get this started. And Tom, I'm sorry, am I pulling in Monica now or am I waiting or?
Yeah, she, well, she'll be certainly available and interested in the discussion. So you might as well.
Yep. All right, welcome, everybody. This is the Tuesday, January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, special town council meeting for the town of Scarborough, Maine. The first thing is to call to order, which I just did. Second thing is the pledge of allegiance. And I apologize, I'm on a different computer, so please use your flag at home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Tony, would you like to do roll call?
Yes. Counselor Clucci?
Here.
Counselor Gleystein? Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Katerina?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Hamill?
Here.
And Chairman Johnson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, everybody, this is a special town council meeting. It has its own set of rules. It doesn't follow our typical format. This is literally a one agenda item and then we are going to adjourn. So we are now on to order number twenty one zero zero nine, act on the request from Maine Health for mass gathering permit to establish a vaccination clinic in the former Grandstand at Scarborough Downs from February first for approximately six months and to waive a permit fee. With that, Tom has sent me, I'll let him speak to it. There are three caveats that are pretty straightforward. So I will offer up, I believe, I'll just offer up an amendment when the time is right. And so, Tom, I think I'll let you explain it and then I'll share the, I'll share the three caveats on my screen. Is that okay?
That's fine. Yes. By way of introduction, about two weeks ago, just less than two weeks ago, I received a call regarding this potential use of the first level of the Grandstand at Scarborough Downs for a mass, mass vaccination site. A lot has happened in that tour time and it continues to happen. I guess I'm more curious than anything, but I've stopped in almost daily and it's remarkable, the sort of transfer, transformation that's happened in that short timeframe. To that end, there are a few loose ends and Monica Russo has been the one that's running point for Maine Health and the whole permit process. And I believe she's got many things in order that will ultimately satisfy these concerns. But nonetheless, they are open issues and I'd recommend that we include them as conditions. I have all, every expectation that they'll be met to our complete satisfaction. I guess I, Monica had indicated that she's going to join by audio. Her, her video connection is not working right now. So perhaps I'll stop there and I'll let her describe the project and you can ask questions if you have any. I guess the last thing, just administratively, it might be interesting to note. When we first were presented with this prospect, we really huddled as a staff to understand what is the best pass forward for approval and certainly going through site plan for what really amounts to a temporary, very unique use didn't make sense. And so for purposes of efficiency, we thought the mass gathering permit process was, was very good. In fact, it really asks all the pertinent questions and very pleased how it kind of fit this. Noting, of course, that typically these are used for kind of day long or weekend long events, not something of this duration. But nonetheless, I think it serves the purpose quite well. And I've been pleased with certainly the responsiveness of the applicant responding to our many, many dozens of questions. And again, very impressed with how quickly they've been able to move and ready the site. The time really has everything to do with getting this site up and running and operational for February first. And by all estimates, and Monica can speak to it, I think they're well on their schedule to meet that deadline.
Tom, do you just want to rattle off the three, the three loose ends before Monica takes over or?
They were contained in the memorandum from Chief Thurlow. Chief Thurlow kind of quarterbacked, if you will, this process from a staff review. The three conditions that we'd suggest you include with your approval is one, final approval of the security parking and traffic flow plan by the police department. Final two, final approval and sign, of the signage plan, including a requirement for additional waif finding signage at Route one in Scarborough Downs Road to clarify access to the vaccination clinic is only available through Payne Road. And three, final approval and issuance of a business certificate of occupancy by the fire inspector, code enforcement officer at the conclusion of the required renovation work. And I know Monica has responses to at least two of these already.
So when I do put it on, when we do put it on the floor, I'll just ask for that amendment since it wasn't written that way on the agenda. So I can pull it up if somebody wants to read it or I'll just offer it myself. Monica, are you, can you hear us now or?
I can. Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So thank you all very much for having me this evening, joining your council meeting and for your consideration of the request that Maine Health has put forward to establish a vaccination site down at the Scarborough Downs facility. I'm sure this came as a surprise to all of you as it did to me. But certainly this facility has proven to be a very adequate space for us to accommodate a large number of patients coming through for vaccinations for the COVID nineteen pandemic. I'm sure that all of you have had a chance to review the application as well as the narrative that I submitted. And the three items that came back in terms of ongoing concerns, which is certainly understandable, is really around the traffic flow, the parking and the security and safety of the facility. So I'd like to speak to those just for a few moments. I did mention in the application that we've been in conversations with the Maine National Guard. As recently as yesterday, I had a conversation with Captain Patrick Rand. He is the individual who works with the county and the local emergency management team to assess all of the requests that come through the state. And he was quite optimistic that the Maine National Guard will be able to support us in this endeavor. There are a few more steps that I need to go through in terms of a formal submission and review at different levels throughout the state. So in order to close that gap, I've taken steps this week with private firms. So the first in terms of the actual security of the facility, we are engaging first protection services, which I believe you are familiar with, they're located right in Scarborough. They are going to provide us with an individual who can help manage the traffic flow and parking. I'm sorry, with the security of the facility, excuse me. So they will have a uniform but unarmed guard on site during all of our hours of operation. So we're still planning on seven AM to seven PM to initiate vaccination. So that guard will be with us to help, you know, keep calm presence on the property. If there are any patients that arrive who may be disruptive or individuals who are anxious, that individual will be there to. If there are any patients that arrive who may be disruptive or individuals who are anxious, that individual will be there to support us. So the initial term of the contract is for four weeks with the option to renew. And if indeed the National Guard is not able to support us or there's a delay in having those services there. The second item is around traffic flow and parking management. And to address that, we have engaged with SP Plus. It's a firm that Maine Medical Center uses to staff their parking garage and manage their flow. So we have a long history with them at Maine Medical Center as well as Maine Health. And they will be providing us with an individual again through normal hours of operation, Monday through Friday, as well as the weekend. And that individual will be available to help with traffic flow, with managing cars coming in and out of the parking lot. They also will provide us with a shuttle bus. So if for some reason the parking lot is full and there are patients that need assistance with ambulating, we'll be able to offer shuttle service right up to the door to ensure safety for those patients of ours. Any questions about those two key areas?
No, I'll just speak to the last one, if I could. The business certificate of occupancy permit, it's a required permit. They've secured all the permits for the construction work that's underway. I've had conversations with the inspector. I see no reason that the permit won't be issued well in advance of February 1st.
Counselor Gleistine.
Just had a quick question. How many people at a time are you, are you staffing for to serve?
Yes. Right now, you may have seen on the news that there is a shortage of vaccine and Maine Health is experiencing that as well. Our plan now, based on the doses that we have available, is to open on Wednesday, February 3rd, assuming you provide us with that certificate of occupancy. We'll be open that Wednesday late in the day. So our plan is to open at 12:30 and be open until 7 o'clock that evening. That provides us with Monday, Tuesday and early Wednesday morning to do a number of dress rehearsals. Members from the City of Portland Emergency Management, Cumberland County, as well as Dr. Rand, Captain Rand himself from the National Guard will be joining us on those days to do a walkthrough and planning of the facility. Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of next week, our plan is to have five vaccinators on site and they will see six patients per hour. So the volume is quite low. Our plan is to continue a slow ramp up over the course of the next several weeks. Much of it will be determined by vaccine available to us. But also, we're going to be in a process of continuous process improvement. Very much so in terms of just looking at the flow, the exterior of the building, the interior of the building, and are we able to meet the patient needs? So one thing that we don't want to do is go from zero to 200 patients an hour without having the opportunity to learn about the facility and the flow and the supplies and gradually build up. And certainly, we would welcome the engagement of the City of Scarborough Police or EMS to help guide that ramp up process. So we'd like feedback to learn how it's going from your perspective and to contribute to that decision making. We don't want to do that in isolation of feedback from the town.
Sure. Good, Monica, Councilor Katerina, sorry.
Yeah, Monica, thank you very much and thank you for doing this. My question is a question, I think, maybe on the minds of people who may be watching. And that is, these vaccinations, they're not just for Maine Health patients, are they? Or are they for the general public who will sign up and make an appointment, I assume, and then go and get the shots? Is that correct?
That is correct. So our commitment is to the entire community and everyone has equal access to book an appointment and to receive the vaccination within our center.
Good. Any others for Monica? Monica, I think we're just going to hit you with anything at this point.
That's okay.
Any, any other questions for Monica? No? Okay, I think with that, if we're ready, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
And before discussion, I, can we just, can we get the amendment out of the way? So Jean Marie, I'll pull that up and can you offer the amendment?
Uh, which part are we amending?
We're just adding, we're adding the, we're adding the last three bullets.
Okay, I move that we amend order number 21009 to the addition of, of one, final approval of the security parking and traffic flow plans by the police department. Two, final approval of the signage plan, including a requirement for additional wayfinding signage at Route 1 in Scarborough Downs Road to clarify that access to the vaccination clinic is only available through the Payne Road entrance. Three, final approval and issuance of a business certificate of occupancy by the fire inspector code enforcement officer at the conclusion of the required renovation work, and that is a motion.
And can I get a second for the amendment? A discussion on the amendment only?
Can you bring it back up, please?
Yeah.
Have it on the screen.
Yep.
And it's probably gone over, but why do we only want access from Payne Road? It's not as robust as Route 1. So is it because it, you don't want to go through the neighborhood?
That's been closed for months, Betsy.
You can't get there through Route 1, is what you're saying.
Get there from there, no.
It's a logistical, can't get there.
That was a good answer.
So the developers have had that road closed as they're doing work. My understanding is they're in the process right now of putting up utility poles and it would be unsafe to open up that roadway for the public as well as for their own contractors.
Yeah. Okay, Tony, vote on the amendment.
Councilor Clucci?
Yes.
Councilor Gleistine?
Yes.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Katerina?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
So we're back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion on this before we vote? Counselor Clucci.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, thank you to Maine Health for coordinating this and pulling it off. It's, you know, Tom alluded to it earlier, but it's been a massive effort to bring this facility up to snuff so that we could host this vitally important clinic. So I just, you know, I'm proud that it's able to happen in Scarborough and that we're able to to utilize some of the resources that we have. And I know a lot of people have been working very hard to make this a reality and I want to extend some thank you to them as well.
It's worth noting, the folks from Crossroads Holdings are largely using their own staff to perform these renovations. So they have pivoted away from other busy development activity and and really put the full force in effect into motion here.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I'm assuming that the M and R holding company has actually dedicated this space to make this happen. And I really want to give a shout out to them. I think they're a great corporate citizen. Not only this, but, you know, they helped underwrite the the school care program. And I'm sure many other things that I'm unaware of. We may have difference on land use regulations, but I really appreciate that being, they're a great corporate citizen. They're local folks and they they like their community and they they show it through their, through their actions. So again, I want to thank, thank all of them.
Monica, on that point, can you confirm that the space is being made available free of charge?
I can confirm that we entered into an agreement with them and there is rent of $1 for the next six months. So yes, they've been tremendous, tremendous partners throughout this.
Thank you. Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the comments made by others and particularly Ken Johnson's just now. You know, they are a great partner, they've taken great initiative here. You know, I've been a frequent critic of things moving too quickly. But actually, you know, in this case, it's moved quickly because of the, you know, the, you know, they're willing to take risk and innovate by our partner and tremendous cooperation, you know, all around from Maine Health and even the state level, the town staff and so forth. So people were asking, well, when did you find out about this? Well, it was about a week or two ago and I'm glad we're moving quickly. And it's exactly what we need right now. It's a bottleneck in terms of getting people vaccinated, having centers to do it and the ability for immunizations to be given. So I support this completely and appreciate the the speed and the efficiency which has been completed so far.
Thank you, Counselor Katerina.
Yes, I mean, I'm not going to belabor the point, but thanks to the Downs and to Maine Health for doing this. I'm just excited as a Scarborough citizen that Scarborough's stepping up to the plate to help with this horrible situation we're in with the pandemic. And keeping my fingers crossed that this vaccination situation is quickly overcome and we can get everyone vaccinated as soon as possible. So thanks to everyone, including my fellow counselors, for being willing to hop right on this.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, I just want to echo everything that everybody else has said to thank those who have been involved in this and, you know, hope that, you know, Monica, especially as things get moving, if there's anything that's needed from the town, that we have a clear, open line of communication just to make sure that we can continue to support you guys and make sure, whatever we can do to kind of help, as Jean Marie said, to kind of make sure everybody can get the vaccine as as quickly and easily as possible. You know, please let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Tony, you want to take the vote?
Councilor Clucci?
Yes.
Councilor Gleistine?
Yes.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Katerina?
Oh, yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica, thank you very much. Thanks for coming by.
Yes, and thank you all for your support.
You're quite welcome. Next item is, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Tony?
Third.
Fifth.
Councilor Clucci?
Did I miss it? Vote on the amendment and the main motion?
You just voted on the main motion, yes.
I didn't remember we voted twice, so.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
We did.
Councilor Gleistine?
With my brain. I know that.
Are you voting yes to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Katerina?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
And Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, Tony.